Buenas tardes a todos, el día de hoy es el día de audiencia pública del comité de seguridad pública, gestión de emergencias y guardia nacional de Guam se ha llamado a orden. Hoy es miércoles 14 de abril de 2025 y el tiempo ahora es 2:04 PM. Para recordar y en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta, los avisos para este día de audiencia fueron enviados el 7 de abril de 2025 y nuevamente el 12 de abril de 2025. Este día de audiencia también fue publicada en el sitio web de la legislatura de Guam y el sitio web de avisos públicos de Guam. Mi colega Telo Titegui participa esta tarde y creo que Sabina Pérez también está con nosotros, así que gracias a mis colegas por acompañarme esta tarde. Y antes de proceder a la discusión de hoy, me gustaría proporcionar algunos reglas generales de conducta para aquellos presentes. La conducta de este día de audiencia será la siguiente: comentarios escritos o presentaciones deben ser enviadas al comité. Por favor, provee a mi personal legislativo sus comentarios escritos para fotocopia. Los comentarios pueden ser leídos y las presentaciones largas deben ser resumidas a unos cinco minutos. Y sí, me preguntaré con gentileza si puede terminar con ese punto de tiempo, solo para el interés del tiempo. Aquellos ofreciendo comentarios se podrá presentar testimonio oral o escrito. Y una vez que hayan terminado, por favor, permanezcan en el cuarto para preguntas o comentarios adicionales como pueden desear por parte de los miembros del comité. Las preguntas y los comentarios deben estar limitados a la naturaleza de la agenda. La agenda de hoy de audiencia pública cubre el número 20-38 COR de senadores Telo Titegui y Sabina Pérez, que es un acto para repelear las subsecciones 58-109 y 58-110 de capítulo 58 y repelar el capítulo 58B de la división tres, título 10, anotado en código Guam, como enacto por la ley pública 37-47 en su totalidad. Para recordar, el comité invitó a los siguientes individuos y agencias a participar en el día de audiencia pública. El departamento de fire de Guam, el departamento de policía de Guam, el departamento de revenimiento y impuestos, director de DOC Fred Bredalio Jr., como solicitado por el sponsor principal del proyecto, el chambero de comercio de Guam y el señor Jeff Sanchez de ShowPro Pyrotech. Además, el Bureau de gestión de presupuesto de investigación solicitó un anuncio de nota fiscal en el número 20-38 COR datado el 7 de febrero de 2025. BBMR declaró que según el departamento de fire de Guam no ha completado la revisión y establecimiento de los impuestos y los fines asociados con el uso de los fireworks de nivel consumidor, que es un requisito previamente a la implementación del capítulo 58B. Así, GFD informó a BBMR que no habrá un impacto fiscal negativo si el número 20-38 COR sea enacto. En este momento, el presidente invitará a los individuos que quieran testificar en el número 20-38 COR a asistir ante el comité y antes de hablar, los individuos que quieran hacer una presentación primero serán reconocidos por el presidente y se dirán su nombre por motivos recordativos. Y el orden de cuestionamiento comenzará con el panel de senadores, que cada uno tendrá cinco minutos para hacer sus preguntas. El tiempo asignado a cada senador no incluye respuestas que se proveen de aquellos testificantes. La inferencia personal sobre el carácter o motivo de cualquier senador o cualquier individuo comentando no es permitido. Cualquier violación de este reglamento general resultará en la remoción del público a la sala de audiencia para este particular procedimiento. Individuals que fallan en mantener la forma correcta o decoro pueden ser restringidos de presentar testimonio oral y/o pueden ser pidiendo irse o ser escortados y retirados de la sala. La forma correcta o decoro debe ser practicada por todos los presentes en la sala de audiencia pública. Así que me gustaría invitar, primero, a invitar al senador Titegui, la autora del número 20-38 COR, a dar sus comentarios de abertura sobre esta medida. Senador Titegui, tienes el cuarto.
Sí, señor presidente, y también un bienvenido, senador Pérez, gracias por estar aquí, y especialmente a la gente de Guam, gracias por la oportunidad de dirigir el número 20-38, una medida que busca repelear la ley existente que permite la venta y el uso de los fireworks de nivel consumidor en nuestra isla. Este proyecto repele la ley existente que fue aprobada durante la 37ª legislatura de Guam con no hay medidas de seguridad, leyes de aplicación y representa un paso urgente en el salvaguardo de nuestra comunidad. Déjeme ser claro, los fireworks de nivel consumidor son peligrosos, a menudo fatales, y vienen con consecuencias devastadoras cuando se manejan mal. Pelican la seguridad de nuestros niños, familias, primeros respondientes y incluso nuestro entorno frágil. Consideren esto, en 2023, en todo Estados Unidos, los fireworks causaron ocho muertes trágicas y casi 10,000 heridas, muchos de ellos involucrando a niños. La quemada de manos, rostro, ojos era la más común, accounting por casi la mitad de estas heridas. Aquí en Guam, el peligro es aún más pronunciado porque nos falta las instalaciones de atención médica críticas como una unidad de quemada. Heridas graves requieren evacuación médica fuera de la isla, compaginando el coste emocional y financiero de las familias ya que luchan con el trasfondo de tal incidente. Solo necesitamos mirar eventos recientes, como un stark reminder of what happened. Just this New Year's Eve in Honolulu, Hawaii, a catastrophic explosion killed five people, injured 20 and destroyed homes. A horrific tragedy born out of unchecked access to dangerous explosives. Hawaii grappling with illegal fireworks inundating neighborhoods has seized over 227,000 pounds of these professional-grade explosives since 2023. Guam is not immune to these threats. On January 1st, 2025, the fire department responded to an explosion in Jigo that left eight people injured and five hospitalized, four of whom were children. These incidents are just the tip of the iceberg. Many injuries likely go unreported, but the reality remains. If these injuries were severe, our lack of a burn unit would force families to evacuate off-island for medical care. A heartbreaking and avoidable outcome. Our fire department is already overstretched, struggling to respond to illegal fireworks, brush fires, and related emergencies. These activities pull critical resources away from genuine life-threatening situations that demand immediate attention. We are overburdening our emergency services and risking lives, all for fleeting moment of celebration that often ends in irreversible tragedy. We have heard the voices of Guam families, teachers, first responders, and healthcare professionals, all whom are pleading for action. They're sharing the harrowing accounts of children suffering burns, elderly battling respiratory issues, and families traumatized by explosions mere feet away from their own homes. We cannot turn a blind eye to the data, nor can we dismiss the limitations of our healthcare and emergency services. At this time, I'd like to share with you a video that was taken on New Year's Eve in the village of Jigo. And at this time, I would like the AV department to put this up there. This is taken Santa Rosa Hill, and none of these fireworks were done by a professional. That was Jigo. There were other fireworks just like this. Can we repeat it one more time, please? It was similar in Dedito as well. As you can see, this is the same scenario that has been happening in Honolulu, Hawaii as well. They started off with just consumer fireworks, something small, and as years have gone by, without any enforcement, it has now turned into, even two hours before New Year's Eve, we had a video of a news company that went on YouTube, which the chairman offered to put into the committee report, showing two hours before New Year's Eve, these grated fireworks. I mean, it was like four times as much as we saw in Jigo that was going off, and none of them were legal. So, the 20 that was introduced by myself and Senator Pérez is more than legislation. Is a lifeline of our community. It represents our collective responsibility to protect the people of Guam, to preserve the safety of our homes, and to ensure our island remains a place of joy and not tragedy. Let us listen to those who are urging us to act, who are counting on us to make the tough but necessary decisions to prevent needless harm. I urge my colleagues to join me in passing this measure, not for politics, but for the safety and well-being of our people. Let's act before the next celebration brings more heartache. Thank you, señor presidente.
Gracias, senador Titegui. Y antes de empezar con los testimonios, el comité solicita a aquellos que han firmado para proporcionar testimonio oral sobre el número 20-38, que por favor vengan y que por favor den su nombre para recordar, el nombre de su organización o agencia, si su testimonio está siendo proporcionado a esa entidad, y si apoyan o niegan el número 20-38 COR. Y lo que podemos hacer es, podemos ir de izquierda a derecha, si podemos, y vamos a empezar a izquierda con el señor Jeff Sanchez de Jams Media, y luego vamos directo hacia abajo. Así que muchas gracias. Bienvenidos a la legislatura de Guam.
Buenas tardes, senadores. Gracias por tenerme aquí hoy y permitirme expresar mis preocupaciones. Mi nombre es Jeff Sanchez. Soy el dueño de ShowPro Pyrotechnics y Jams Media Productions. Hemos estado en la industria de los fireworks profesionales durante más de 12 años ahora, y con entrenamiento previo en diferentes países por organizaciones que hacen shows mundiales. Así que entendemos las complejidades, así como los requisitos y el respeto que este tipo de negocio ofrece y proporciona. Y así, hemos estado haciendo esto durante muchos años, y siento que estamos en el lugar correcto para venir y darles nuestra opinión sobre, ya sabes, este proyecto para repelar el que fue aprobado. Así que nuestra postura sobre ello es que apoyamos la repele, y la razón principal, todo se reduce a la seguridad. Se trata de la seguridad. Y lo que dije en la última legislatura fue que pasar un proyecto sin incluso reglas o regulaciones era muy peligroso. Y es como poner la cartera ante el caballo. Simplemente no lo haces. Y además, como adolescente con experiencia en no solo jugar con los fireworks, sino incluso quemarse por ellos, estos son productos de nivel consumidor seguro y sano, ya sabes, cosas que se supone que solo giran en el suelo, menos de doce metros, como sabes, la ley anterior o la que fue aprobada estaba estando, era para ser seguros. Estos fireworks que giraban en el suelo, no sabiendo que podrían girar en el aire y en tu camiseta, es lo que me pasó. Y así, tengo experiencia firsthand sobre cuán peligroso realmente podría ser. Y así tomo una postura, ya sabes, para permanecer del lado seguro. Y en un mundo perfecto con pequeños paquetes de paquetes y piedras de fuego y brillantes, como empresario, podría hacer mucho más dinero vendiendo los fireworks de esa manera, distribuyéndolos a los centrales. Así que cuando la gente dice, oh, solo quiero continuar monopolizando la industria de los fireworks en Guam, no es eso, porque podría hacer mucho más dinero vendiendo los fireworks de nivel consumidor si hubiesen reglas y regulaciones, y la aplicación es la cosa mayor. Pero esos tres ni siquiera existen. Quiero decir, incluso con los fireworks ahora, cuando esto supuestamente se volvió legal en los últimos meses, vimos un gran aumento en los fireworks ilegales, no solo en New Year's, sino en la celebración diaria. Ahora, hace unos años, hablé con un agente de ATF de Hawaii que estaba viniendo a hacer inspecciones regulares con nuestro negocio y dijo, la situación en Hawaii es tan desapercibida que en New Year's y el 4 de julio, hay fireworks ocurriendo en su bloque que simplemente no puede hacer nada. Y este es un agente federal que se supone que, ya sabes, mantiene esto. Y no es que no quieran, es solo, ¿cómo lo haces y mantienes seguro al mismo tiempo? Así que ciertamente puede salir de la mano, eso no es ni siquiera una pregunta, y lo hará, ya sabes, Guam está justo al borde del iceberg. Pero eso continúa siendo un problema para mí, solo viendo que viene. Y con este incidente en Jigo que pasó, no sé si oyeron los detalles de cómo sucedió, pero estos individuos supuestamente pusieron los fireworks en una taza para tratar de lanzarlos en el aire, no sabiendo que no lanzará en el aire, pero luego tienes un eslabón metálico que explota por todas partes. Y así, esto puede pasar regularmente sin, ya sabes, la prevención adecuada. Y vamos a continuar tomando una postura de seguridad porque una vida es una vida demasiada. Ahora, la última legislatura dijo, lo que podamos escribir en la ley podemos deshacer y deshacer, y es hora de deshacer ese, ese no muy bien pensado, ya sabes, trozo de ley que fue aprobado. Así que gracias por escucharme.
Bien, gracias, señor Sanchez. Vamos a ir al medio ahora, por favor, den su nombre, nuevamente, y la agencia que representa, y usted puede seguir.
Hafade, mi nombre es Christine Camacho Fajerin. Soy la directora de la división de recursos de tierra y suelo de foresta en el departamento de agricultura de Guam. Pero hoy represento a su departamento de agricultura de Guam como directora ejecutiva. El ordenador no funcionaba, así que está en mi teléfono. Así que Hafade, senador Kumatautau, senador Titegui, senador Pérez, gracias por la oportunidad de proporcionar testimonio escrito sobre el proyecto, que por cierto apoyamos, la repele, para repele. Así que testimonio escrito sobre el número 20-38 COR, un acto para repelar las subsecciones 58-109 y 58-110 de capítulo 58, y repelar el capítulo 58B de la división tres, título 10, anotado en código Guam, como enacto por la ley pública 37-47 en su totalidad. Un proyecto para repelar la legislación recientemente enactada y regulación de la utilización de los fireworks de nivel consumidor. El proyecto complementa este proyecto actual para la repele, complementa el plan de acción forestal de Guam, que describe los incendios como una amenaza superior a nuestras flores y recursos naturales. Aproximadamente 4% de la área de tierra total se quemó anualmente en Guam desde 2015 hasta 2024. El proyecto propuesto apoyará la reducción de nuestro riesgo de incendios y el potencial de peligro en un momento en el que la seguridad pública carece de la personalidad necesaria y los activos de trabajo para trabajar y operar a plena capacidad para satisfacer nuestras necesidades de respuesta a los incendios actuales. Nuestra ley de los fireworks previo a la inclusión del capítulo 58B de la división tres, título 10, GCA, había sido aplaudido por compañeros de incendios a través de fronteras nacionales e internacionales por su restricción y protección de la comunidad de Guam. Reitero de mi testimonio anterior, cuando esto fue el primer, el primer cambio había ocurrido, que no tenemos incendios naturales ocasionados en Guam. Todos los incendios de Guam son causados por personas. Nuestro oficio trabaja con compañeros para rastrear y localizar los acontecimientos de incendios de Guam y frecuencias, que hemos utilizado para desarrollar información educativa basada en el lugar y hojas de hechos para difundir la conciencia localmente. La comunidad de incendios en todo el país y redes internacionales han proporcionado datos sonoros, datos que el departamento de fire de Guam ha hecho un gran trabajo compartiendo a lo largo de los años, que a despreciar sería malavocado, y a seguir despreciando, debería decir, sería malavocado y contradictorio a nuestros esfuerzos locales para mantener nuestra comunidad segura. ignorar los datos locales y nacionales es literalmente mirar a la mirada a los hechos, la ciencia y la mejor información disponible. Actualmente tenemos un equipo de diez bomberos de la selva para Guam, que es su departamento de agricultura, foresta y recursos de tierra de Guam. Eso significa que en cualquier momento tendríamos cuatro individuos por camioneta de incendios, y actualmente solo tenemos dos camiones corriendo, y están corriendo con, cada día es un desafío que no podemos tener dos camiones corriendo. Así que actualmente corriendo, pero desesperadamente requiriendo mantenimiento mucho necesario y nuevas piezas. Los otros deben seguir detrás en un vehículo auxiliar con acceso limitado y movilidad. El incendio no es nuestro único trabajo. Los mismos individuos también tienen tareas con los proyectos de reforestación de Guam, protegiendo las flores, el suelo y el agua de los incendios. Cuando el departamento de fire de Guam se enfoca en proteger la vida y la propiedad en Guam, su división de la foresta es la única otra equipo protegiendo nuestros recursos naturales para la gente de Guam. Los compañeros de defensa del departamento, o son excelentes, pero sus activos se desplegan cuando la propiedad de DOD está en riesgo. Nosotros, su departamento de agricultura de Guam, división de recursos de tierra y foresta, y su departamento de fire de Guam tienen tareas de responder y investigar incendios, y nuestros equipos están en necesidad de personalización. Por favor, consideren cuando todos los incendios de Guam son causados por personas, cuánto es más fácil tu decisión de mantener la ley como es, cuál es tu decisión... Lo siento, es tan pequeño, no puedo ver. Por favor, consideren cuando todos los... perdí mi impulso. Cuánto su decisión hará de colocar un dispositivo incendiario, un incendio seguro y sano en nuestros colchones. Va a hacerlo más fácil manteniéndolo como es. Con respeto, entendemos el dibujo, la emoción vinculada a los recuerdos de los fireworks y la celebración, pero tenemos que considerar y liderar por los mejores ejemplos que tenemos, que nosotros como comunidad de isla priorizamos. Priorizamos la seguridad de nuestra isla, su naturalidad, nuestra salud y seguridad global de nuestra gente. Ser la voz que prioriza a la gente viviendo en armonía con su entorno y lo que significa ser la gente de la tierra. Si tienen alguna pregunta sobre este testimonio, por favor, no hesiten en contactarme. Lo disculpo por los ruidos, es difícil de ver. Pero hubo un número de hojas de hechos que he recomiendado. Su correo tendrá todos ellos. El departamento de fire de Guam tiene un número de buenas hojas de hechos maravillosas, y nuestras hojas de hechos vienen de su DOAG. Estos están todos basados en los datos de Guam. Así que ninguno de estos es un cortador de galletas, número nacional estampado en Guam. Gracias.
Bien, gracias, señora Fajerin. Bueno, ahora pasaremos a señor Arturo del departamento de fire de Guam. Y antes de empezar, me gustaría también reconocer la presencia de un miembro del comité y el vicepresidente de la legislatura de Guam, senador Tonyada. Gracias. Vaya, señor Arturo.
Buenas tardes, señor presidente, colegas senadores. Mi nombre es Edward Arturo, asesor de jefe de fire con el departamento de fire de Guam. También soy el fiscal de fire designado. Estoy aquí ante usted hoy, representando el gerente de la gestión senior dentro del departamento de fire de Guam. Me gustaría comenzar diciendo que el departamento de fire de Guam opera siguiendo las normas de la industria, los codes de la industria y las normas. Y uno de los principales que seguimos, que hemos adoptado, ya sabes, décadas atrás es la NFPA, la Asociación Nacional de Protección de los Incendios. Y dentro de la NFPA, hay un estándar cubierto para los fireworks y explosivos. Y es importante saber que los fireworks son ilegales, los fireworks de nivel consumidor son ilegales en el código de incendios. Sin embargo, lo que tiene ahí es guía. Si una jurisdicción quería adoptar los fireworks de nivel consumidor, proporciona guía sobre cómo configurar, ya sabes, las operaciones y cómo el departamento de fire se encargará, ya sabes, de manejar el proceso de permiso y todo eso. Así que la razón por la que mencioné eso es que la ley que fue aprobada previamente, básicamente lo que hizo fue que entró en el código de incendios y extrapuló todas esas provisiones y guías sobre cómo configurar o darle al departamento de fire la autorización para promover y comenzar las reglas y regulaciones. Así que hemos estado recibiendo muchos preguntas, y sé que la pregunta se preguntará, ¿dónde está el departamento de fire de Guam con las reglas y regulaciones? Y para responder a eso, el departamento de fire de Guam está actualmente llevando a cabo un proceso para actualizar todos sus impuestos y fines, y eso incluye todo, desde la respuesta de emergencia, servicios de rescate, impuestos 911, servicios de ambulancia, servicios paramédicos, y nuestros impuestos y fines de prevención de incendios. Y las reglas y regulaciones de los fireworks están dentro del bureau de prevención de incendios, y es una responsabilidad de mi bureau y mi personal desarrollar eso. Así que para responder a la pregunta, ¿dónde está el departamento de fire de Guam con eso?, la respuesta es que todavía estamos en el proceso de tratar de formular y actualizar todos nuestros impuestos y fines, y estamos haciendo nuestro mejor para tratar de encontrar la correcta jurisdicción que coincide con Guam en todos nuestros servicios que proporcionamos. Y desafortunadamente, no hemos tenido el tiempo de finalizar todo eso, así que ahí es donde estamos hoy. También quiero señalar que hay guías, tenemos mucho investigación y datos, y tan pronto como vuelva a mi oficina enviaré un correo electrónico a todo eso al comité y para proporcionarle toda la información que pueden usar para obtener sobre cómo pueden ayudar, mejor ser guiados por, ya sabes, su decisión cuando es hora de votar. Tenemos guías de la Asociación Internacional de jefes de incendios, y la postura es que como líderes de la industria en el servicio de incendios, realmente es nuestro rol proporcionarles el cuerpo con toda la información que es requerida, así que pueden tener todos los datos que están ahí, ocurriendo en todo el país con respecto a los fireworks, los fireworks de nivel consumidor, heridas, lo que mencionaste, hospitales, cómo están manejando todo esto. Y seré capaz de proporcionar eso para usted. Gracias.
Bien, gracias, señor Arturo. Senador, en realidad empezaremos con las preguntas y respuestas. ¿Puedo empezar con usted esta tarde? Oh, sí, absolutamente.
Gracias, señor presidente. Muchas gracias a todos por estar aquí. Sé que Fred Bredalio, quien también es un defensor, ya sabes, de repele este proyecto, enviará testimonio más tarde. Creo que se le pegó. Sabes, una de las cosas que me olvidé mencionar también, no es solo el departamento de fire el que tiene que ver con algunos de estos, los problemas que surgen con, especialmente los fireworks ilegales, pero también el departamento de policía de Guam, y esperamos obtener testimonio de ellos. He sabido que varias veces hubo llamadas telefónicas que fueron hechas al GPD, que habían oído disparos de balas, y esto es durante el año, porque este proyecto que fue aprobado en la 37ª legislatura de Guam, no dice solo en los días de Navidad. Es 24/7, siete días por semana, puedes disparar los fireworks. Así que este es un problema con el departamento de fire de Guam. Están recibiendo estas llamadas, están quitando su personal, viniendo allí, descubriendo que alguien está jugando con los fireworks, y realmente no es un disparo de balas. Así que hay mucho estrés, no solo en el departamento de fire, pero también en el GPD. En el proyecto, el proyecto que fue aprobado, algo pone la cartera ante el caballo. Ya sabes, aprobamos el proyecto para legalizar los fireworks, pero aún no teníamos ninguna regla, guía en ahí en absoluto. Así que ha tomado un tiempo para que el GFD obtenga estas reglas y regulaciones. Sin embargo, mencionaste antes que la asociación de incendios nacional, creo que este fue uno que Joey Siniklis había mencionado antes, que este grupo de individuos no estaban en apoyo de los fireworks, especialmente, ya sabes, aunque cuando tienes los fireworks de nivel consumidor que se maneja por profesionales versus estos fireworks. Y dice que puede vender hasta 2,000, supongo, déjame volver al proyecto, permite hasta la venta de un individuo, si no me equivoco, es 2,000, no libras, pero piedras de fuego. pound, not pounds, but firecrackers.
I believe it's an individual, 2,000 individual pieces, yeah, in the law, yes.
You stick all that together, what could happen? If you blow 2,000 of those fireworks out and they're all put together and they're blown up, what could happen?
You can have a pretty significant soft tissue injury, burns, and other stuff, flash burns and other stuff that could also potentially happen.
If you put it in a pot, all those fireworks in a pot, can it actually act as like some kind of bomb?
Most likely, yes.
Okay, so you can get severely, so the bill allows for up to 2,000 per person. So you can have someone come in there, purchase 2,000 of these firecrackers, and then go to another store that's selling it and purchase another 2,000. There's really no way to tell if someone had just purchased this, right? Okay. What happens if individual homes carry this amount of firecrackers and they put it in the garage, or they put it somewhere in their homes, and they have like 2,000, let's say 2,000, and after some time, do these firecrackers actually can leak in any way or cause any issues to explode if just a mere heat or a simple spark can blow it up?
I think Mr. Sanchez can probably answer that best on stability and instability of the packaging.
Thank you for asking that question. So the answer is, it's simple. With that much explosives in one area, I'm going to take Hawaii as the example. I'm sure, you know, they didn't mean to launch all of those fireworks that they had in storage at the same time. But fireworks have an unpredictable, you know, result. Meaning if they're not properly launched, they can not only go up, they can go sideways. And in the case I gave you earlier of the firework jumping into my sweater, I can easily see that if you have an abundance of fireworks in storage somewhere and it's improperly lit by another firework that, you know, kind of went that way instead, or just any simple household fire, that that can be catastrophic. So the storage of these fireworks are incredibly, you know, important as well. I, all of the fireworks that we import are stored in proper magazines, and these are inspected every few years by the federal agents. And I also wanted to just touch on the first question that you had about when they're put in a pot. All I have to do is have you reference the Boston Marathon bombings. Those were made with common fireworks put into a pressure cooker. And that is, you can YouTube how to make, you know, homemade bombs. And I don't want to say that too much because people start doing that. And with just your common consumer-grade fireworks, these deadly bombs can be made. Doesn't even take 2,000 pieces.
The current bill right now allows for fireworks to go off, right, at this time? If there was no, if there was a law that said that it's prohibited, fireworks are prohibited, you know, unless it's consumer, is it easier then to fine individuals or arrest people with illegal fireworks in their hands if it was just illegal period, unless you're certified like Mr. Sanchez is?
Well, Senator, I can say, Mr. Sanchez also mentioned earlier, the enforcement is the biggest piece, right? So how do goods and services, how do goods come into the island? It's through our ports of entry, right? So when Customs has a shipment of something that they question or they're not too certain of, they'll call the fire department and see if it's within the applicable fire codes and standards. And that's the only way that we can catch it. You know, that's not in our jurisdiction to regulate what comes in. But we do get alerted when times are needed for us to come out. And I think, Mr. Sanchez, we had a case where we were able to catch something and we confiscated it. And Mr. Sanchez was able to help us properly dispose of it. So that's the only route that we would have is, we would have to be alerted by it when a customs agent calls us.
For the Department of Agriculture, there are guidelines with regards to burning. I think maybe fire department knows about that certain times of the year where there is a no-burning put in place. How does this work when people can blow off fireworks, you know, 24/7, seven days a week? How does that happen now? What happens then? They're not burning, they're just firing off fireworks. What happens then?
Right. For your Guam Department of Agriculture, like, our response is that permits for burning that come from our office are actually agriculture permits. So it's use of fire for the sake of clearing, opening up the space, amending soils for agriculture, for farming. And even with that, we've drafted the permit so that, which is free, we've drafted the permit to go and coincide with the Guam Fire Department's burn permit. And that way, it ensures that if we do an inspection on a property and we say, you need to put all of these variables in place, a fire break, reduce your fuel load, do some bush cutting, get it into this condition, we will watch the weather. Then our office, if approved, if we come back and you have done all the things we've required, we will come back and we will act as service support. We won't ignite the fire, we will just be there to help contain the fire on the property. And this is to support our farmers. But everything ties back to what the weather conditions are telling us. There is a fire danger rating for Guam. The weather office works very closely with our office at Agriculture. And we are the on-the-ground confirmation of when that red flag is announced. That information then gets disseminated to all of our fire partners and law enforcement. There is very much a close tie and network when we talk about wildland fire and fire on Guam. Our fire partners are made aware. So ag permit, it doesn't fly unless they also agree with it.
So Fire Chief Arturo, can you tell me, when are the fire no-burning times of the year that happens? And if somebody is not burning, blows up a firework, which can cause an easy grass fire? I mean, can you instigate your law there or tell an individual that they're...
Yes, we are currently entering our hottest time of the year, our dry season. And as Christine mentioned, everything is based off the fire danger rating. So you can come in and apply for a burning permit, and we set the conditions for that operation to happen. And the final piece is us, our engine company, going out to location and doing an inspection. However, even though you are allowed to burn with a permit, once one of your neighbors complains that the smoke is offensive to them, then we have to advise them to put the fire out. But there are conditions of the year when the grass is very dry. Vegetation is at high risk for, you know, unintended fire that has sparks and embers that travel can set a wildland fire off very easily.
So how does this work with fireworks? I mean, you know, if someone wants to blow up a firecracker?
If the conditions are right, it can start a fire, definitely.
And there's no law that governs it?
Not currently, yeah.
I wanted to, I missed clarifying that in the nine years I've worked for the Guam Department of Agriculture, we haven't issued a single agriculture burn permit. I'm going to say that again. We have not issued a single agriculture burn permit. And it wasn't for lack of, it wasn't because our office said no. It was the six or seven families that came forward to request a permit after speaking with us, having our consultation on the ground. They all opted to choose alternative methods. So it's something, it's very humbling when you think about that. Many of our fires do occur across all types of private property.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make that clear, that this, the current law, anyone, 24/7, seven days a week, even during dry season, that can start a fire. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Titer. Senator Sabina Perez, you can ask your questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it possible to show that video one more time?
AV, can we show the video one more time, please? We'll stand by.
We wanted to take you out to a live shot.
The local one, thank you.
Thank you for indulging me. So the question is for Mr. Arturo. What has the fire department done to investigate this?
We worked with our partners, with the Guam Police Department, and we also reached out to Mr. Jeff on if there's any ways it can help us identify, you know, what's being seen in the air with the video and try to formulate a team or provide them with the best information for law enforcement to take the lead on this.
Because this is illegal activity, according to the current statute. Are you aware of that?
Yes, we are aware.
Okay. The other thing that, in the testimony provided for this bill that became law, there was a position statement by the International Association of Fire Chiefs that was released in 2022. Are you aware of that position statement?
Yes, they are adamantly against consumer-grade fireworks.
Have they changed their position?
Not that I know of, yes.
Okay, so if I could just read, the International Association of Fire Chiefs adopts the position that the importation, sale, and use of all consumer fireworks, including sparklers, the local, state, and federal level should be banned, with the exception of professional public displays by licensed pyrotechnic operators. And so it's, I guess this is what's brought up during the public hearing for Bill 9 at the time. Why didn't the fire department adopt this position in line with the National Fire Chiefs?
I'm not, I was in a different position during that time, so I can't answer to that question, sorry.
Okay, you're the current assistant chief, is that correct?
Yes.
What is your position?
Our position is to provide this body with all the information, all the data, all the statistics that you can use to help you make your decision when it's time for you to vote.
What about adopting the position of the International Fire Chiefs?
I would have to consult with our senior team and ask them for that advice moving forward.
Okay, because it's clearly, we don't have the capacity to address illegal fireworks, as you saw. I mean, you just testified just now that you haven't fully come to a conclusion for the investigation of that. And so that's a clear indication that we don't have the capacity to deal with illegal explosion of fireworks. The other thing that, you know, Mr. Chair, if you can reach out to GuamPA as well, and they provided testimony on the Bill 9 at the time. And there is a concern about explosive waste stream. That is a hazardous waste stream that which our landfill cannot accept. And so right now, remember, in one of the testimonies, an individual who's selling fireworks at Saipem stated that they dump things down the drain. And so because Saipem, quote, "doesn't have disposal regulations." And I think that is a serious issue when we're talking about our infrastructure that costs millions upon millions of dollars, as well as the impact to the safety of individuals in the proximity of these businesses that are dumping things down the drain. And with this misconception that there is no disposal requirements for explosive waste. The bill that was passed, unfortunately, was passed, it was, there was a call of the question, and the sponsor, myself, were unable to make changes to the bill to make it safer. But at this time, it's very clear that, you know, we don't have the capacity to protect the environment, protect the people, since the investigation, you know, has not been concluded. Do you share these concerns as the fire, acting fire chief? I mean, if we cannot control or regulate illegal fireworks, what does that mean about the safety of our community?
Well, again, Senator, it's all about the enforcement of how these things come into the island. I mean, we don't know, the fire department doesn't know who's in possession of any substance, whether it's legal or illegal. The only time you'll know is when it's being set off. And all we can do is gather evidence, and most, the most prominent form is a WhatsApp viral video that goes around. And, you know, based on our knowledge of where the village is, we try to do our best to pinpoint, as a case in that example with the video, and try to find a position of where it's coming from. And, you know, law enforcement, the lead law enforcement investigation with that would be GPD. Of course, we provide technical assistance for the fireworks component. And we just have to do our best with trying to find where that location was shot off from. But yes, it is a, it is a cause of concern, definitely is. We, you know, we're, fireworks that can cause a fire is just going to task our resources even further. And, you know, Senator mentioned also, you know, every year during liberation, Fourth of July, New Year's Eve, we respond, we respond to injuries associated with fireworks, whether legal or illegal.
Okay, so one of the things the bill does, it doesn't, it repeals the public law. But before this public law was passed, the initial language was, "No fireworks shall be permitted in Guam unless consigned to the territorial federal government, in which case they shall not be discharged, except under the direct supervision of authorities of one of said governments." And so this particular language allowed for commercial fireworks, is that correct?
Yeah, I believe the fire code is a pyrotechnic operator only, is authorized.
Right, and so that's what this public law, 3747, it removed it. And so perhaps because of this law, this bill, it totally just repeals it. But I just wanted to make that clear, that if we're repealing this law, that maybe this language, you know, should we want to continue with commercial fireworks, that that language be reinstated basically by experts and people that know how to handle and can do it properly under direct supervision. The other thing was safe and sane fireworks. And so I know the fire chiefs had a position on that, and they basically stated that there is no such thing. I mean, that's one of the things that, you know, when you label something as safe and sane, it gives the perception that it is safe and sane. But the international chief, fire chief stated that there is no such a thing as that. And so that's something I also, I wanted to point out. A question for, I'm sorry, you were raising your hand, Acting Director.
Chief sort of covered it when he addressed the increase in wildland fires. This weekend alone, there were at least five fires. The weather office called me several times advising that they can see, they can see what looks like smoke, smoke plumes on their radar. And we already had our crew out fighting fire, coming in overtime to address, to respond. And the fire department stretched to respond as well. These were wildfires that are most likely intentional set. Most likely, one or two may be an escaped backyard fire. An investigation would have to be conducted to determine that. But the majority of these fires have been intentionally set fires, to include the reforestation project sites. It just needs to be reemphasized that right now you see fireworks going up in the air, then we hear injury. But how soon before we see more burned land, more compromised landscape, and loss of agriculture lands? It's, we're just making it so much easier by keeping this law as is. And we should go back to when everyone across the nation and international waters, Australia, wildland fire investigators who trained your Guam teams here, applauded us and have been tracking the status of this since, sending articles. Oh, my gosh, I can't believe it. So I just had to share that again, that it's not just the Guam voice, it's these other partners that have been watching and just with heartbreak, because you did Guam what the rest of us have been trying because you did Guam what the rest of us have been trying to do. And in one swift move, it was obliterated.
Senator Perez, do you have one more question?
I do have two more, if you could indulge me. I know the time is running.
That's fine, you can ask your questions, please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, the other things are safer alternatives. So, we know about drone technology, which doesn't require combustion. And that's widely, being widely used, I think, throughout the world. I mean, to what extent can we go towards safer alternatives? Because from what I understand, some of the byproducts of combustion of fireworks leaves a lot of residue in our environment, such as, you know, potassium. There's an increase of contaminants in our oceans, as well as the particulate matter. So, there's, it affects asthmatics, those that are susceptible to particulate matter in the air. So, we're talking about air pollution and noise pollution. That was another concern, was the effects to animals, right? And so, in addition to humans, as we are part of the animal kingdom as well. But yeah, I guess your thoughts, I mean, maybe perhaps Guam could pivot towards alternative, safer displays. Maybe I can ask the panel to comment on this.
I can, I can make a comment. In the manufacturing world of pyrotechnics, there's an effort being put out to manufacture more and more, they call them debrisless pyrotechnics, that leave no debris where everything is burned and just disappears into the air. And so, these are a little bit more costly, as you can imagine, especially since they're just new. But those, that effort is being made, as well as cold spark technology. You might have seen this where on stages, and even indoors, you can use these spark machines that the current GFD permits and allows us to use. I was the first to bring that to the attention of one of our chiefs who came and visited to test the unit at my own residence. And I showed him that, you know, not only was the powder non-combustible, but you could literally touch the sparks and not get burned. So, there is technology that's being implemented that we can use as alternatives. And you mentioned drones, drone shows are great. But again, you know, with professional fireworks displays, it's really hard to duplicate or replace the effect of an explosive device that is meant to launch six, 700, eight feet in the air. And the only thing I can say to be able to do that in not only in a safe, but to, you know, as part of our training, we also take into consideration, like you said, the noise pollution, the pets, the distance requirements. We follow all of that. And one of the permitting requirements by the fire department is even in the transport process. So, when we're bringing these from our storage to the actual site, there's a whole process that, you know, takes into consideration the people even in the highways. And we have to kind of carefully plan out our route where we're not going through neighborhoods and schools. So, all of that is part of the professional training that with just consumer, you know, let's just open it up and make it free for everybody, all of that gets thrown out the window. And then, we have an incredibly volatile situation when it comes to, you know, moving these things, shooting them off. And as a result, you know, you'll get footage like that video that wasn't meant to be played of Hawaii, where it's just chaotic, you know, it's just everywhere. And we will get there if we don't repeal this current law. So, that's where we're headed.
Thank you, one more question, that's okay. So, Acting Chief, so I remember in one of the testimonies for the increasing enforcement of fire, wildland fires, there is a huge loss, economic loss to reforestation. So, I believe, what was the statistic where for every acre that's reforested, the amount of work that you put into and the money that goes into that and the efforts? So, just to give you an idea, the impact of wildland fires in general, but with this particular, you know, the hazard of fireworks also adds to that, could add to that, pose that problem to, you know, causing wildland fires. Do you recall that statistic?
Did I share this statistic?
Actually, it was BSP who provided that statistics. But I do recall that there is a huge economic impact.
No, there is, there is. The reforestation grants alone, we have, you know, over the years, several million dollars' worth of like reforestation projects. And every year, for example, Asgardal in the village of Moleso is our plantation from 2018. And every year, that plantation has been hit with wildfire. About 75%, 50% of the plantation burns. So, we're constantly redoing and returning. And that's what forestry does. Our job, we don't quit. We keep coming back and keep reclaiming and replanting and cutting fire breaks and putting more, more time onto sites, which pulls us from other projects. So, there's most definitely an economic impact with regard to wildfire on reforestation projects. I don't have that number. But what I can say is island-wide, I said it in the testimony, island-wide, the annual average of total percent area burned across the island is 4%. It's like four and a half percent, really. And that comes out to about 8,000 acres, stretched out across the island. And that's Department of Defense, public, and private lands. It's significant. And when we talk about the national numbers, California, Alaska, states that have high fire frequency to include naturally occurring fires, they would have, they burn an annual average of like .0something. We're at four and a half percent to their .0something.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that response. And also, the houses that live nearby these wildland fires are, you know, basically at risk too of damage as well. But also, the cascading effects of the coral reefs. So, whenever these fires burn, there's a high likelihood of soil erosion, which can impact our very precious coral reef, which is, I think, very unique to Guam. So, thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker, you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Perhaps, you know, the video that was played, was that, anyone in the panel can answer that, was that consumer-grade fireworks? Or was that commercial-grade fireworks that was?
So, those are, believe it or not, those are called consumer-grade fireworks. And these are similar to the ones that, like in some of the states in the US, you can buy on occasion, and they sell them for a limited time. They're usually shot in boxes that are average about 12 inches by 12 inches, but go way higher than the 12 feet that was kind of put into law. But those are consumer grade. Those aren't even professional grade. Professional grade is a lot more combustible. And yeah, it really, it's defined by the number of grams that are in one set of explosives, which is limited to 500 grams. The minute you go over 500 grams, it becomes professional grade or a different classification. 1.4G is what those consumer-grade fireworks are rated at. And those are still incredibly dangerous.
I see. So, prior to the passage of this law, how was the consumer-grade fireworks coming onto the island, do you know?
My guess is two things. By ship, either, you know, and actually, it's not even a guess. I've had people literally tell me that they're, you know, getting stuff that was imported on the ship. And then, through Saipan, because in Saipan, consumer-grade fireworks, you can buy at most stores. So, their laws are, you know, they're, they're basically legal there. 1.3, which is above that 500 gram limit, is illegal. And so, anytime you get into that, that's when the feds and ATF gets involved.
I see, okay. Yeah, you know, I was looking at the testimony, and you were mentioning about 4% of the total land area has burned annually. Was any of that caused by fireworks?
That's an excellent question. If any of the wildland fires have been caused by fireworks, our investigations to date have not indicated fireworks. It doesn't take it out of the realm. But many of our fires, because I must clarify this, many of the intentionally set fires are started pretty far out there on the ridge, and they burn out towards the community. Or they're on a shrimp trail or a hiking trail and comes out to community. You don't really need a firework to set something off in there. It's, nobody's out there with you. And chances are, it's a lighter in the grass, something's set, and you have plenty of time to make your way out before someone comes around. So, law, in fact, having law enforcement and patrol, our conservation officers are getting a wonderful boost right now. We have increase in support. And all we can do is keep praying that we have more support for policing, active policing, and eyes on the ground to continue to like find these individuals. But I'm not ruling it out that fireworks are caused or have caused wildland fire. It just means we haven't investigated one yet that we found. And the only thing that triggers investigations to date, because we haven't investigated every fire. That takes time, and it takes people. I was your lead investigator for the first few years, and now I'm the, well, I'm Acting Director today, but I'm now the Division Chief. So, my ability to break away and go and investigate a fire has become much more challenging for time. So, we need individuals to retrain and to get certified back into investigations. And then, we can talk about having more investigations, more frequency of investigations on the ground. What has triggered investigations to date have been firefighter injury, damage to property, where a landowner has contacted us and said, "Can someone come and check this out?" Or the radio station in Moleso.
So, it's just, I just wanted to make that clear because I just wanted, I wanted to be fair.
Yes.
To where that 4%, we cannot assume that that was caused by consumer-grade fireworks, right?
What we can say for sure is that all of these fires have been human-caused ignitions.
Exactly, well, that's, whether it's intentionally set by a lighter or something else, but we cannot say for sure that it was started by a consumer-grade fireworks, right?
Correct, but investigations have, you know, the training includes being able to identify fireworks.
Right, okay. And sir, would you think that more, I guess, laws need to be in place for this, for the commercial-grade fireworks or the professional-type fireworks? You were mentioning about they're making now, with technology now, making fireworks more friendly to the environment. Should we, is there something that we need to start looking at and placing into law now?
Well, there is technology that is trying to provide alternatives. I also mentioned that, you know, it's very hard to replicate the actual firework, the bigger pro-grade stuff. But also, Senator, before, I think it was before you came in, I was basically saying that, oh man, I lost my train of thought, but that as far as the laws are concerned, because the first bill that was passed is very vague and it didn't have any rules, that was our first problem. Secondly, even with the old law that said, you know, only permitted pyrotechnics displays under, that will be, you know, permitted by the government, shall be allowed. Even with that law, there were still fireworks being launched, you know, still fireworks being imported. So, we can certainly write as many of the laws as possible, but enforcement is going to be the key. It's hard enough to enforce, you know, the laws as we have it, as we stand. But I, unfortunately, people don't really follow the laws. Or, you know, even when they're written properly, they don't read into it. And when the first word of this legal, fireworks are legal now, I had maybe 100 calls, you know, a month, people asking me to buy my fireworks. It's like, no, you know, you just can't. It's not, that's not the law. And then, secondly, with the video, the way that shows is, you know, part of that, the design of the original bill was to have safe and sane, you know, low-level kind of stuff that you see on the ground. But obviously, people, the minute they hear fireworks are legal, it's like anything goes. And so, it's really difficult, you know, and my bottom line is just safety, you know. And I'm not trying to take away fun and all of that stuff. But when one person gets hurt, especially if it's a little kid that's a bystander, which happened, you know, this New Year's here on Guam, that is when I could say, you know, enough is enough. We really got to do better to protect our people. And as mentioned, you know, we were applauded for having such a very stringent law prohibiting the use of that. And we didn't take away fireworks. We still had companies, not just mine, that were able to do it. Anybody can do it. They just got to be able to have the proper training. I think the bottom line is having the proper respect for the product. You're talking about an explosive, you know, that can kill people. And my family and I risk, you know, our lives every time we do this for the, for the community to be able to enjoy this safely, you know. And it's really not about the money. Because if it was about the money, as I stated earlier, I'd be selling it to every store to sell it to everybody else. You can make more money doing that. It's easier, but it's not about easy, it's about safe.
So, since you're a professional in this field, right?
Yes, sir.
The commercial-grade fireworks, do you think a total repeal of the law is necessary? Or do you think maybe looking at how we can strengthen the law that's currently in place would be more advantageous versus repealing the law completely?
So, you know, as history shows, even in Hawaii, for example, they tried to adopt a consumer-grade, you know, legal, but it just got so out of hand with the requirements and the enforcement that, you know, too many people got injured or still getting injured. And when you talk about writing laws on how many you can buy, what kind you can buy, how high they can go, we can write all the laws we need to. And I applaud you guys for what you do. But really, on the enforcement side, you know, the task on the fire department as well as the police department. I mean, Senator, as an example, before this law was even passed, I was contracted to do a show in one of the villages by one of our mayors. And at the same time, down the block, two, just two blocks down, the same level of fireworks were being shot. And I don't need to tell you what village this was in, but you know, it's one of those known for having their fireworks every, every week, for that matter. But yeah, there was stuff going on as we were contracted, and we, we had a standby, an engine there that's required, you know, that's safe. And we were meeting the distance requirements. You had another group that was blowing it right out of their front garage, you know, as high as we were, we were shooting, almost competing with us, if you would. And I was just like, this is so dangerous, you know, these people don't realize. So, that's, that's why I've taken that position of, it's better to just, you know, keep it off the board and, you know, let us or let whoever else that gets into the business properly do it.
Yeah, definitely, you know, because I was looking when the, during the public hearings and the public hearing and the passage of this bill into law, it always said that, you know, they would rather have fireworks than bullets flying, right, on New Year's Eve and things like that. But I guess there's always the other side to the coin, right? And there's always safety factors as well. And I think that looking at, looking at the current law that's in place and how we're going to, either we strengthen it or we totally repeal it, does that make, does that make now Guam any safer? Or does it make it any, any better? Because you just said it, that you were, you were, you know, contracted to our mayor to do a fireworks show, but yet, just down the street, you had the same type of fireworks that was going off. So, one or two things, how does that type of fireworks, again, right, get into the island without being confiscated prior to its, prior to, you know, making?
Right, and so, with the example of our drug epidemic, you know, it's already bad enough that we can't catch, you know, these illegal drugs that will probably never be made legal with any kind of law. But it's, you know, fireworks are looked at as more of a less, you know, dangerous situation, but it can still, it takes a life, a firework can take a life faster than a drug does. You know, drugs over time and widespread in the community. I understand all of that. But in one instant, like in Hawaii, lives can be lost, you know, all because of carelessness. I'm sure those people meant well. I'm sure they meant that they were going to do this for the community and show their block, you know, a good time. But I'm also sure that they didn't plan on not seeing their, you know, families again, ever, because of just one, you know, stupid decision, so.
Yeah, thank you for that, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your testimonies today. Mr. Chair, that's the only questions I had, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, Vice Speaker. At this time, I'd like to ask the bill's sponsor if she'd like to close. No, I'm okay. I'll save mine to the very end, but it's not a question.
Thank you so much. You know, this is very emotional for us. I know that Senator Perez and I worked very hard to try, knowing that we were up against eight people who didn't care. knowing that we were up against eight people who didn't care. They just wanted the bill passed, whether it was a favor, what my good colleague has mentioned, horse trading when it comes to bills. And this is the reality. That's what happens sometimes on the floor. Instead of what's doing what's right. We tried to make amendments to the bill and they wouldn't let us. Putting the cart before the horse. I'm, I'm, I want to apologize to the fire department, putting you in this predicament. So what I want to do is correct the wrong and make it right by let's start from the beginning. Repeal the bill, leaving the ability still for consumer, those who, that are business, that do the fireworks, who actually go through the training and have all the safety mechanisms in place. Keep that, but repeal the whole thing. And if anybody, any of my colleagues want to continue to have fireworks, then let's do it correctly. Let's look at the laws, incorporate none of this 24/7, seven days a week, fireworks going off. What happens during dry season? No burning. You guys can't do anything about it. Somebody blows up a firework, you know, sets off a firecracker and it causes a fire. They're in trouble. They're not burning. Five people killed, 20 injured in Hawaii. Guam got lucky this time. We didn't have any deaths, but we had eight people injured and five hospitalized. Hospitalized where we don't even have a burn unit to take, take care of those people who do get injured on this island. The already stretched of, of our police officers, our firemen, the lack of enforcement on their end and adding fuel to fire. No pun intended on that one. This is not the type of legislation that we should be putting out for our people. It's about protecting them and our children. So this bill, Mr. Chair, I hope gets through as soon as possible to correct a wrong that was passed by a body of last year who didn't even want to hear about putting amendments to make it safer for our people. Just put it through. Our people deserve better. So I kindly ask that if this bill can get through, our committee reports, go through committee and, and any markups needed that it get passed. And, and I ask the public, the people of Guam, please write to your senators and ask their support to repeal this law that's hurting our children, our family, our environment. And make Guam safe again. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Taregui. And a couple of notes for the community. We will be adding on to the committee report a, a link to a, a video that was referred to the committee by Senator Taregui from the state of Hawaii. Again, we, to have issues locally, to, to have it up on our YouTube channel. But it will be entered into the record as part of the committee report. Also to GFD, if we can, Chief, based on the testimony today and the question from Senator Sabina Perez, can you ensure that at some point in the committee, we'll be asking for GFD's response to the position that was taken by the International Association of Fire Chiefs and the kind of the, the issues there? We'll send the, the question to you and we'll also make sure that that is also entered into the record for this particular measure. So again, thank you for your testimony. Well, the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and Guam National Guard appreciates the attendance and the participation of all senators and community stakeholders in this public hearing on Bill 20-38COR. The committee will review the information received during this hearing today and communicate further with relevant government and non-government entities if necessary. The committee has tentatively scheduled a markup on Bill 20-38COR for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. at my office, located at 120 Father Duenus Avenue, Capitol Plaza, Suite 103, here in Hagana, 96910. The committee members and the primary author of Bill 20-38 are invited to participate in that markup. The committee will also continue to accept written testimony on Bill 20-38COR for the next five business days or until Monday, April 21st, 2025. Testimony may be submitted via email to my office at office.senatorshaun@guamlegislature.gov, through the legislature mailroom here at the Guam Congress Building here in Hagana, or they may be delivered directly to my senatorial office, also here in Hagana. With that, this public hearing by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Management, and the Guam National Guard on Bill 20-38COR is hereby adjourned. The time now is 3:18 p.m. Have a great day, everyone.